Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its representative government, our nation, our God, and his law, liberty, and justice for all.
Our minutes from March 10th, March 19th, and March 24th were received, Commissioners. Any corrections? The minutes will stand as submitted. Proclamation. City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imaginations, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities; and whereas libraries serve as a vibrant community hub, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning; and whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive; and whereas libraries partners with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community; and whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, lifelong learners by providing access to resources, trainings, and opportunities that support careers, growth, and economic success; and whereas libraries nurture young minds through story times, STEM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love for learning that lasts a lifetime; and whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions for intellectual freedom and free expressions; and whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Wilmut Collins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Communities and Libraries Month. In Helena and I encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources, and create all the ways that library draws us together as a community. In witness whereof, I have hereon set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this seventh day of April 2025. Wilmut Collins, Mayor, the name Claiborne, Clerk of the Commission. Who's here to receive the proclamation?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners. John Finn from Lewis and Clark Library.
Say a few words?
John Finn, Lewis and Clark Library. I just wanted to point out that this is National Library Week, and we're celebrating this week at the public library and at the school libraries. I want to thank you. I'm on, we're all honored to be recognized for this month, for Library Month. I would encourage folks to check out our website, www.lclibrary.org/community this month. It has a rundown of all the programs that we're doing for this Communities and Libraries Month. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Joanne Dedrickson, and I am a librarian at Helena High School. I just wanted to speak a little bit to the program that we're running in April. We are honored by this proclamation, and we're so excited in April to spread the news about libraries, to remind our community of how much we touch the lives of our children, of our adults, of our elderly, of our sick, those with disabilities, those with diversity. We strive to touch them all. And even though we come from very different library types, I'm a school librarian, we have, we have an academic librarian who's on our, on our team too. We come from very different roles. We have the same intentions, and that is to promote lifelong learning and access to information. So, thank you so much for the proclamation.
You're welcome. All right, you don't have to stay if you don't want to stay, but we would love for you to if you want to stay, so I'm just telling you. All right, Consent Agenda. One motion, no presentation required. Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item A claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Do we, do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Proposals from the Commissioners? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to reconsider Item 10B of the Regular Commission Agenda dated January 27, 2025. I move what's listed on the agenda, the reconsideration of Item 10B of the Regular City Commission Meeting from January 27. I believe it is listed for further on.
Thank you. Second.
Okay. Any discussion, Commissioners?
I wonder, Mr. Mayor, just so the public understands what the motion is, can we maybe have the City Attorney just do a review?
Aren't we going to be using that right here? We'll have people come up.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Attorney Doctor, you have the floor.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. The bylaws of the City Commission allow for reconsideration of a previous vote if two of the previous Commissioners who voted in favor of a matter previously are, bring it before the Commission and ask for reconsideration. In this case, the three that were the prevailing votes on the previous motion were Commissioner Shertliff, Commissioner Shertliff, Commissioner Dean, and Commissioner Reed. Since the motion was made by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Shertliff, that would suffice for a motion to reconsider the matter, and then the vote can come before this body to decide whether or not to bring it forward. The matter that was the considered on the January 27 Commission Meeting, the previous matter, was a variance at 1208, I think it's 1208 Le Grand Cannon Boulevard, and that would, it's, so what's before you right now is whether or not you will reconsider the decision that was previously made on January 27. And other than that, that's all I have at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
If I might, I had mentioned this in an admin meeting some time ago, and in order to reconsider, because we received communication that may or may not contain new information. So, it is my understanding that if we agree now, we will hear it in regular items in just a little bit, correct?
Yeah.
Cool.
Mayor, Commissioners, yes, if it's voted for in favor of doing so, you would hear it later on, on Item 10B, I believe, is where it would be considered in the, in the agenda. And if I may, may I just speak to a letter that came to the Commission, Mayor, if you would allow?
Please.
The, I just want to put on the record that it is in your discretion to make this decision. There were two people on the prevailing side that made the motion, and you can consider it. I just want to make the record clear that there was notice and opportunity to be heard on this matter that came before this Commission on Jan, January 27. It had, the notice was for an administrative meeting prior to that where the property owners had the opportunity and did comment during that Commission, Admin Commission Meeting. Then, five days later, it was also noticed that this item was on the agenda for the Regular Commission Meeting, and they did comment during that Commission Meeting as well. I understand there was a letter in the interim between those two meetings that came to the Commission that perhaps did not get to the Commission. However, there was opportunity at that Commission for those matters to come before this Commission during that meeting. Again, it's your discretion to make that decision if you'd like. I just want the record to reflect that I believe legally that notice and opportunity were offered for that matter during that time. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will continue. Is there anything from the applicant or the representative prior to the public hearing this comment? Do we have the applicant or representative present? Madam Clerk, any online? What's that?
Yes, we are present.
You have the floor.
Hi, this is Morgan Pettit from Crowley Fleck. Justin Harkins and I, my colleague at Crowley Fleck, are handling this matter, matter with the Pintos, and we represent Shelley and David. Sorry that we didn't hear you before, but we're here now. So, I do have some points of clarification to say, but in respect of Commissioner Reed's comments that she would like to hear new information and other Commissioners before, before me, I'm going to keep it to newly ascertained information and just clarify a few points that I think are worth clarifying. So.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we still need to hear, before she goes into the substantive matter, we would still need to hear whether or not you're voting to reconsider the matter, which will come later if you do vote to reconsider. So, sorry if that was confusing.
We will get back to you.
Okay. Were you asking for comments then on just the motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay, I do have those.
No, no, not you. Comments from the Commission. We'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioners.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will, as I've done in previous variances, I will, I will support the motion to reconsider. I don't think that, it totally separate from the actual decision of the variance. I'm open to hearing any new or other information, as I've said in previous variance requests and reconsiderations, so I'm happy to vote for the reconsideration and then hear
Thank you.
this information.
Commissioners, any other comments? And, Joelle, just to add to what you say, I will also consider this, but I'll prevail upon us to please go to the site. It will take 10 minutes of your time. Go there and look at it and see what's going on. The pictures that you see, they do not do justice. Go and observe it yourselves, Commissioners. Okay. Any others? Okay, at this point, we will start it.
Mayor, at this point, you take a vote on whether or not you'd like to reconsider it.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion to reconsider carries five to zero.
Okay. Okay, so we, B. Consider, no, this is not reconsider, right? This is consider.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Disregard. All right. Reporter of the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Reporter of the City Manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Chairperson Ben Kiper, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have nothing new to report since last Wednesday's admin meeting, so I'll stand for any questions.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now we're back here. So, I'm perfectly confused. Are we, we're not reconsidering this? Okay. Reconsideration of Item B from Regular Commission Agenda dated 1/27/25, considered 1208 Le Grand Sidewalk Variance Appeal. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Have a little new information to provide you on this. So, this is similar presentation that you received at the admin meeting. The addition is that the appeal to the variance was on, up there as part of the date. This is the site. Again, pictures don't do it justice, but this is the, what was and what's before you. So, part of the letter that's been referred to talked about adoption of the PROEAG and whether they're in force or not. And just to give you a little, some dates, MDT adopted the PROEAG as standards back in 2016. City of Helena adopted it in 2017 as part of their, as a part of our ADA Transition Plan. Other entities, Great Falls has adopted them, Missoula, and basically, they're there in the absence of, of guidance in the ADAG or ADA standards, original standards. There's a section from the, from the MDT's ADA Transition Plan that says, "MDT has established standards and policies that provide guidance for installation of accessible features on newly constructed or altered public right-of-way and facilities. The ADAG and PROEAG are two of these sets of guidelines for design of accessible features on new construction and alterations." This, you know, encapsulates what's our position as well, where we don't have clear guidance, where we have things that don't quite fit the original ADA guidelines. That's why back in the, they brought forward PROEAG and the, you know, public right-of-way accessible guidelines to address some of those issues. Now, I think there's other issues out there that are still needing to be considered in the public right-of-way, but I'm hopeful that this gets adopted. It has been, like I said, adopted by the USDOT in December of 2024, effective date of January 17th, 25, the GSA, and like I said, MDT, Helena, Great Falls, and Missoula. Another item in the, the letter was talking about the slope and the restriction that sidewalks can't be built over 5%. Well, this guidance in PROEAG allows for sidewalks, those accessible features, to be built on, at the grade, no more, the maximum grade of the adjacent street. So, in this case, the sidewalks could be built, just as long as they didn't exceed the maximum grade of the street adjacent. There's, it also alludes to that there was, you know, not similar streets. While there's not continuous sidewalks on the west side, as everybody knows, there are intermittent sidewalks. Henderson, there's sidewalks. Allison, there are sidewalks. These are just a couple of the pictures and the percentages of this grade, you know, 13.2, 10.5. Again, these are to be designed for accessible features for all members of our community. And so, the city, the city code section that requires 742, that requires sidewalks to be built, it contemplates sidewalks, the city code contemplates that there would be sidewalks because it talks about sidewalks everywhere with being that that's the first option that you are to build. You know, that section of code is for owners to build. It's not for the city to, you know, come out and build every missing gap that we have, but as we tick off those vacant lots or renovating lots, and then we either upgrade our sidewalks to current standards, or we start installing sidewalks where there were none before. You know, part of this is reflected on our latest inventory of the city's sidewalks, our gap analysis. There's over $30 million worth of sidewalk gaps in the City of Helena right now, another 21 million of repairs on the existing sidewalks. That's a big-ticket item of, that, you know, has to be considered along with, you know, potholes and street repairs and fixing leaking roofs and everything. So, while I understand that, you know, building a sidewalk might not make sense because there's not sidewalks to the north of this property, there is a connecting feature to the south, and that's Le Grand Cannon Shared Use Path. You know, our, our hope in transportation is by individuals building sidewalks along their properties. That'll encourage their neighbors to build that connective network as we come along with other projects, then potentially enhancing those with, you know, updated ADA corners and removing some of these barriers for our, our pedestrian and multimodal members of our community. I have some other notes, but I think I'll stop there for questions of the Commission at this time.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Director Knopki, would you repeat those dollar figures on the need for sidewalk infrastructure in Helena?
There's a pro, yes. Mayor and Commissioners, approximately $30 million for sidewalk gaps and approximately $21 million for repairs and upgrades to existing sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, just a comment, follow-up, since we're on the topic of the letter, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. The letter, let's see, it was dated January 24, 2025, and it's from Crowley Fleck. And one of the concerns that I had was that there's, and I think Director Knopki has touched on those, but that I think is important, is pointed out in their, in their letter relative to the ADA standard. It said additionally, if, if the exception, the city requests to apply here ever actually replaces the city's current enforceable standard of a 5% maximum slope gradient, the Pintos are probably more likely to find a contractor willing to install the sidewalk. Because the ADA standards have never been allowed for installation of such steep sidewalks, it is no wonder they cannot find a contractor comfortable with installing that. And then they, they just go on to point out, even if there do exist current sidewalks at a gradient steeper than 5%, that would not render this proposed sidewalk ADA compliant or more importantly, safe for pedestrians. So, that's, I think that's an important consideration as we consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For Director Knopki, could you remind us what are the criteria for a variance on a sidewalk?
Mayor and Commission, there, the variance of the sidewalk is actually placement of the sidewalk. We have been in, case by case, allowing for a deferral of sidewalks in those areas where there is no infrastructure, unpaved roads, those dirt roads that we have. But technically, in the, in the city code, it's for placement. So, that means it's either the preferred is Boulevard sidewalks, seven-foot vegetative Boulevard with a five-foot sidewalk. The placement would be whether or not that sidewalk gets closer or farther, you know, closer or farther away from that curb. So, as you can see on the picture on the left, there's curbside sidewalk, which would have been a variance for placement, and on the right, there's Boulevard sidewalks, which is the preferred sidewalk installation in the City of Helena.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just follow up.
Please.
So, if I'm hearing correctly, and I looked to make sure I wasn't missing anything, we do not have a variance because of steepness or other factors like that?
Mayor and Commissioners, no. Obviously, it would be considered if there was a sidewalk that would lead to a cliff edge, because the way Helena was platted back in the day, they didn't take a site visit to see where some of these right-of-ways would be, and there are areas where there's drop-offs or, you know, right-of-ways ending into the mountainside. So, obviously, those would be taken into consideration. In this case, there's a pedestrian facility just to the south of this property. In this, the original plan set that was approved by the city, the property owner or their consultants submitted a plan set showing that they were intending to put Boulevard sidewalks on the site. Those plans were approved because they, they met all our conditions. They didn't ask for a placement variance, so it was our assumption that sidewalks would be considered or would be built, but upon approval, that same day, a variance was requested of the city, so to defer the installation of sidewalks.
Thank you.
Any others? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a clarification based on what you just said, and then one other question. So, the, and I think I, well, I did read this in here, but you're saying that the, when the plans were submitted, the applicant had Boulevard sidewalks that were approved by the city, and then after the approval, that was when the variance was submitted?
Mayor and Commissioner, that's correct. They had sidewalks shown on both Le Grand and Cleveland.
Okay.
And through the previous variance process, we approved the variance for deferral of the Le Grand side because there's the shared use path, but to make the connection to the Le Grand that we elected to require the sidewalks on Cleveland.
Okay. And then, another question I had, we talked a little bit about this the first time this came up, and then received a letter where it talks more about the ADA PROEAG disagreements, I guess, that the applicant would have. Can you talk about how some of this has been, has been overcome in other parts of the community? Are there examples where the PROEAG standards met the grade requirements for a particular property's sidewalk installation?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, we, our current contractor that is doing our ADA and sidewalk program installed a similar sidewalk over, off of Rodney, I believe, last summer. It had another steep grade. Typically, where we run into the issues is at the corners, at the ADA ramps, where you have the steep grade coming down, and you have, you know, what is needed for a flat section for an ADA ramp per the ADA and PROEAG standards. That's where we work with the contractor, we work with the homeowner to alleviate those. If they cannot be alleviated due to whatever reason or not, those, there's, the PROEAG has a technical infusibility form. has a technical infusibility form. And cost doesn't come into play with the technical infusibility, but, you know, certain, uh, design features, uh, the built environment, uh, topographic issues. In this case, they are allowed to have, um, they can put sidewalks adjacent to that road grade. Um, uh, as I said before, that's what was submitted. Um, there, um, one, uh, item in the letter that talked about that, uh, there's no enforcement mechanism. The city can adopt, and we did, a stricter standard than what was in place before because there was an absence of regulations for the right-ofway. So the city ad- chose to adopt the pro-wag standards through the ADA transition plan. This doesn't mean the DOJ hasn't adopted it yet, the DOT just did, but that doesn't mean that nobody else can, uh, adopt these standards. It just means that the federal government can enforce those standards upon state or local entities. So these, as they are written, can be adopted and can be used in design and construction in local governments.
Do you have any other comments? Thank you, Director Knopki. At this time, we invite the applicant and/or their representative. Sorry for the confusion earlier.
No worries. Mayor Commissioners, I am here again, uh, Morgan Pettit, speaking on behalf of, um, our clients, uh, David and Shelley Pinto. And I'm going to provide new information and maybe some information in response to, uh, Mr. Knopki's, uh, comments. So first, uh, the Pintos, we believe, are entitled to deferring the installation of the Cleveland Street sidewalk until the time that the city enacts a sidewalk improvement district. We believe this for a few reasons. First, there is a standard for a variance, and it's very clear under Helena City Code, Section seven four two B one B, which is the sidewalk code. And I can, I have legal printouts if you guys want them.
Just pass it on to the clerk.
Okay, great.
Would you please?
So I, uh, copied the code that is relevant here, and as I get further down in this, there's also some, uh, federal code that becomes important. Um, so the city manager or this commission, uh, this is the reading of the variance. The city manager or this commission on appeal may grant a variance to the sidewalk placement requirements upon application from the property owner where unusual conditions or strict adherence would cause undue and extreme hardship. So those are the terms of art, as we say, is unusual conditions or strict adherence that would cause undue and extreme hardship. And insofar as the, the comments about, um, a deferral not being available here, um, we believe that there is due to the city's past practices of, uh, allowing, uh, deferrals on sidewalks where there is instru- in, infrastructure installed. Um, for example, in this case alone, um, the look, the directors, uh, director offered to defer installation, or the city manager, excuse me, the city manager, um, offered the Pintos deferral, deferral of the installation of the sidewalk along La Grande Canyon Boulevard. Um, and there is infrastructure right along that, that road. So this has happened in the past, and so we ask for it now. And, um, and so far as the comment about, um, how variances work and how that process also goes is, um, the Pintos did receive a building permit and there were sidewalks on it. Um, they, at the same time that they received that building permit, um, Mr. Pinto requested the variance, uh, because a variance is a response to, uh, being held to a standard that they don't believe that they should be held to. So in order to request the variance, you have to first be subject to the condition that you think is, uh, you reflects undue hardship and unusual circumstances. So let me talk about those hardships. The Pinto's first hardship in this case is undue liability concerns. Section four, seven dash four dash two A of the Helena City Code, the first sentence of the city's rules actually regarding sidewalks reads that, "One of the main purposes of providing for the installation of sidewalks is to provide a connected system for those with disabilities traveling across the city. Firstly, requiring the Pintos to install this one sidewalk along their property right now provides the city with no more sidewalk connectivity than without it. The sidewalk would dead-end at a very steep slope at an alleyway. There is not another sidewalk on Cleveland Street for five blocks. And the next one that is, that it's on is, um, at the school, five blocks to the north. Waiting to install this sidewalk until others in the area are required to install sidewalks does not threaten the city's goal of connectivity and reduces liability concerns that both the Pintos and the city would be subject to should the Pintos be required to install the sidewalk at this time." Second, part B one F of the Helena City Code, the same, same section I just referred to, reads that property owners within the city must construct sidewalks that comply with current sidewalk engineering or ADA standards. So regarding the first part of this regulation, as far as we know, the Montana Department of Transportation's current engineering standards, which as Director Knopki stated, were adopted in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, uh, state that no sidewalk may be installed above a five percent grade. And this is because the exception to that rule was not enforced or enacted until January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Regarding the second part of this regulation in my statement before this, we realize and openly, openly provide an update on the status of the public right-ofway accessibility guidelines, which we've, we've all refer to as pro-wag. Director Knopki referred to, um, the, the pro-wag in the January twenty-seventh commission meeting, and we discussed it in our January letter. As of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, the U, United States Department of Transportation has adopted in order affected, effective the updated pro-wag. In relevant part, these updates state that where a pedestrian access route is contained within a highway right-ofway, the grade of the, the pedestrian access route shall not exceed one over twenty or five percent. There's also a new exception, not there before, that says where the grade established for the adjacent street exceeds one over twenty, the grade of the pedestrian access route shall not exceed the grade established for the adjacent street. As enacted by the United States Department of Transportation in federal code, because the pro-wag is just that, it's guidance, it's not enforceable on property owners, it is enforceable on the state and other federal agencies. Um, it says, the code where this was promulgated, states that except as set forth in B two below, if new construction or alterations of a transit stop located in the public right-ofway commence after January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, the new construction or alterations of the transit stop shall comply with the requirements set forth in the updated pro-wag. The B two exception, which applies here, however, expressly, expressly states that new construction or alterations of transit stops located in the public right-ofway on which construction has begun or all approvals for final design have been received before January seventeen, twenty twenty-five are not required to be consistent with the requirements set forth in the updated pro-wag. So there are two, two key takeaways that we want to highlight here. The first is that the regulations were clearly not adopted or effective prior to the Pinto's request for this variance. They therefore should not have, should have no effect on this matter. Second, the regulations expressly state that they only apply to new construction commencing after January seventeenth. The regulations expressly do not apply to the Pinto's property or their variance request because the Pinto's received final approval of their construction permit, commenced construction on their house, and requested this variance long before January seventeenth. In fact, many months ago last year. So even if the new pro-wag guidelines applied to the Pintos, they qualify for the exception, granting relief from the guidelines anyway. Finally, yeah, even if these guidelines were applicable, the Pintos are still left with, and as Director Knopki pointed out, the Pintos are still left with all of the other issues they have discussed in this variance request and appeal, and those issues alone entitle the Pintos to a variance. The bottom, the bottom line is that the Pintos feel that their request to defer installation of the Cleveland Street sidewalk only provides the Montana Department of Transportation and the city more time to decide and, uh, direct the public on whether they adopt the pro-wag as it was adopted by the U.S. Department of Transportation. And it gives both the Montana Department of Transportation and the city more time to comprehensively, comprehensively review and publish their own guidance, clarifying what ADA compliance looks like in Helena. Until these steps are taken, it is extremely difficult for the Pinto, Pintos, or any contractor, frankly, in Helena to know what actions may be subject, subjected to ADA complaints and what actions may not, unless, of course, you're working with the city, then you would know. Uh, so we find these to be unusual circumstances, and we believe they're unusual circumstances. That's that subject the Pintos to undue hardship and that as ordinary property, property owners of Helena, they should not be subject to. The Pinto's second hardship is undue safety concerns due to the unusually steep slope of the relevant, relevant part of Cleveland Street. And on this note, we have new information or information that we've gathered since, um, last time we were able to be heard on this matter. Um, the reality of the Pinto's deferral, deferral request is that the sidewalk the city is currently forcing them to install is unusually and extremely steep. So steep, in fact, that the steepness of Cleveland Street firmly reinforces why the city code allows property owners to receive construction variances in the first place. At the January meeting, Director Knopki produced two examples of steep sidewalk installations even remotely located near the Pinto's property. These two examples were a pub, were at, uh, at a public park on House Allison Street and a public church on Henderson Street. The two blocks are situated further down the approach to Mount Helena. The, uh, additional two examples still on the slides behind you or in front of you, um, are also located, Sussex is located two miles from this, this, uh, this, the sidewalk that we, um, are discussing today. And then, um, Mountain View is also, that is the sidewalk located next to, uh, the same school that is located by Allison Street. Both the park and the church are by far, in these sidewalks, I would argue, um, are by far more heavily trafficked than the Pinto's lot because they are public and located in general, generally busier areas closer to Euclid Ave, which we know is the main drag on the west side. Both parks and churches play central roles in communities and intentionally attract people. Unlike these types of places, the remodeling being conducted on the Pinto's house will not attract greater traffic to their area. Both sidewalks along Allison and Henderson are located multiple blocks downhill from the Pinto's property. Um, Director Knopki provided the slopes of these streets and indicated in the January meeting that he used LiDAR from a sidewalk inventory to do so. Um, Director Knopki noted it, noted in that meeting that these were average slopes of Henderson and Allison, not just the slope of the block at issue. So, um, previously, the Pinto's had only used basic tools to adopt the slope information of their property, to obtain the slope information of their property. So to prepare for this reconsideration and give you better estimates, uh, the Pinto's decided to use LiDAR as well to determine what the slopes of these sidewalks were. They also, um, used LiDAR maps to determine, uh, the, from the U.S., U.S. Geological Survey, uh, to determine the specific slope of the blocks along the church sidewalk portion of Henderson and the park sidewalk portion of Allison. According to those maps, the grade of Henderson sidewalk is around ten point seven percent. The grade of the Allison sidewalk is around nine point six percent. The grade of Cleveland Street along the Pinto's property is actually around eighteen point seven percent, according to these LiDAR maps. A physical inspection of all three of these locations would confirm the reasonableness of these numbers. Cleveland Street along the Pinto's property then is over triple the allowable grade for ADA compliant sidewalks, nearly double both sidewalk grades at the locations Director Knopki provided as examples in the January meeting. Installing a sidewalk at an eighteen point seven percent grade, especially with no downhill connectivity at this time, unarguably presents major safety concerns for the Pinto's and people using the sidewalk. Importantly, winter weather conditions in Helena, Montana are not similar to those in locations where exceptionally steep sidewalks at eighteen point seven percent grade are currently installed. Um, maintaining the sidewalk in the wintertime is a real and legitimate safety concern for the Pinto's, especially given that they intend to grow old at their house and that they do not have the capacity and resources a city park or church has to properly maintain the sidewalk. Without proper maintenance, even if the sidewalk is installed, it poses a substantial danger when wet or icy to everyone, not just persons with disabilities. In this way, the Pinto's again expose themselves to liability. The Pinto's remain steadfast that the unusual physical characteristics of their property are extremely different than the characteristics of any other property in the area where a sidewalk has been installed. Such unusual characteristics warrant granting the Pinto's deferral request in this case. We see no harm to request, to granting the deferral request in this case, especially considering that at a diff, at, at a time later than now, there is potential that maybe one day, at one time, all neighbors can install sidewalks that connect and rid, get, decrease the concern of liability and safety. So, um, Mayor Commissioners, you also asked what the Pinto's are specifically requesting here, and I want to take a moment just to reiterate and clarify that the Pinto's are requesting that this commission grant their request to defer installation of the Cleveland Street sidewalk until such time that a sidewalk improvement district or other, any other neighborhood-wide sidewalk initiative is implemented. As you know, before, because SIDS are implemented on an area-wide basis, they are reliable mechanisms for preventing piecemeal sidewalk installation since all neighbors are required to install the sidewalk at the same time. SIDS or sidewalk programs also decrease each property owner's cost to install sidewalks if the same contractor is hired to perform the work. There are also opportunities for SIDS to be partially funded through government and agency initiatives or grants or loans. In the Pinto's neighborhoods in particular, implementation of a SIDS would be an appropriate time to install sidewalks because connectivity issues could be resolved concurrently with sidewalk construction. Sidewalk construction is also likely to be more cost-effective, which is important in this area, um, where installing sidewalks will likely to be, is likely to be more expensive due to the number of steeply angled properties. A SIDS would also promote neighborhood aesthetics and promote the city's fundamental goal of increasing Helena's connectivity. As the Pinto's have explained numerous times, they are not anti-sidewalk. We would not be here if the sidewalk that, uh, in this matter was not at an eighteen point seven percent grade. What they are asking is to be relieved, not forever, but relieved for now from the obligation to install a sidewalk. They ask that you not force them to install, install a sidewalk when it will not connect to any other sidewalk for several blocks and when it will only, only serve to increase the Pinto's construction expense, maintenance responsibilities, and landowner liability while contributing next to nothing to the city's otherwise laudable goal of an interconnected sidewalk grid. To reconfirm, the Pinto's would sign an agreement that they will not protest any future SIDS in the area if granted this deferral, which is what they were offered on the La Grande Canyon deferral offer. For these reasons, the Pinto's are convinced that they meet the requirements necessary to receive a variance under Helena City Code from the commission that allows them to defer installation of a sidewalk until a SIDS or any other similar sidewalk program is enacted. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Ms. Pettit, you may not know the answer to this question, um, and if, if not, I might, uh, if, in the event Mr. Pinto decides to, uh, offer comment, I'll ask it of him. But one of the things we didn't talk about at the last hearing of this was cost. You have cost estimates on this, were it to be installed?
We do, and I will allow, uh, Mr. Pinto to speak on that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have the cost?
Um, I don't, would, I don't, I didn't get them, I didn't get those documents, so I don't feel like I can speak to it personally, um, but Mr. Pinto did, so he can speak to it and verify those costs.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a, a question on the, the component of safety and the slope and, and how dangerous that slope would be, can you help me understand how it would be more safe if somebody else had a sidewalk just after it? How does that change the safety dynamic?
So I looked into this extensively, uh, particularly where steep sidewalks occur, uh, in California and San Francisco in particular. And what they do is they install ramps, as Director Knopki was, um, alluding to. So you install the sidewalk, um, but there's usually a ramp or some other way to slow down traffic, um, be- before the next sidewalk goes into a steep grade. That's how they've been doing it out there. I'm not sure it would work out here because San Francisco doesn't have the same ice and snow conditions that we do, um, but, but that is what my research has revealed.
And just a, a quick follow-up. So I, I guess the other piece of the safety, I'm, I'm struggling to contextualize a bit, i- if we have someone who, um, is differently abled, how is it safer to walk in the street? Could you repeat the question?
If, if we're talking about safety and accessibility, if we have someone who's either walking on a sidewalk or in the street, it, it appears that the argument is that the sidewalk is more dangerous. Can you help me understand that?
So it's not, it's not exactly what we're arguing. Um, we're arguing that the sidewalk as installed is, would be dangerous because of the connectivity issues that it has, uh, particularly that it doesn't have any connection whatsoever except into a gravel alleyway at this point. So, we're not saying that sidewalks are unsafe or that people using them, it doesn't contribute to safety, but we're saying in this case that this particular sidewalk would be unsafe.
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, so I just want to clarify, so it sounded like one of the arguments that you were making was that there's not pedestrian traffic on Cleveland. Is that accurate?
No, that is not one of the arguments I was making.
Okay, so, I mean, there are people that walk there. I think you talked a little bit about that there is more traffic by the middle school. And this goes a little bit to Commissioner Reed's question. Since there are people that are walking on Cleveland to La Grande many, many times a day, you feel that it would be more safe for them to be walking in the street than on the sidewalk?
Again, I think the question misses the nuance of the argument here slightly because I agree with you that sidewalks are increased safety. But what I may disagree with you here is that a sidewalk on Cleveland Street would increase safety in this case. First, because Cleveland Street, it is walked a lot. I mean, I lived on Henderson and Naid for quite a while, so I know the area pretty well, too. But we're saying that Cleveland Street, the people that use it right now are used to navigating it in a certain way. Granted, that's not maybe the best way, but installing a sidewalk right now on this one part would be unsafe for all the reasons that we stated, until potentially there could be more sidewalks installed at the same time on Cleveland Street.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Question to follow up my colleagues' questions of Ms. Pettit. So, relative to the safety of the sidewalk and the liability, should something happen on a sidewalk versus in the street, whose liability in the event of an accident in either case?
So, sidewalks are technically the city's public right-of-way, but they are on the property of the landowner. And it is the landowner that is installing it, and it's the duty of the landowner to maintain it, for the same reasons that it's their duty to install it. So, the liability there would be tricky, right? I mean, as a lawyer, I can say I would not, if someone were to be hurt in the street versus a sidewalk or on the sidewalk, I would not just sue one or the other, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Pettit.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I had a follow-up question for Director Knopke, if I might.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Director Knopke, could you tell me when the sidewalks were constructed in the two examples? I think we had Henderson and Sussex, or when were those constructed?
Mayor Commissioners, I don't have those dates, but they were some time ago. They've been here. I think some of those pictures, the Street View pictures date back to prior to 2020. I would have to get back to you on that because I don't have the exact dates.
But they were constructed prior to any updates with ProAg, et cetera?
Mayor Commissioners, by just looking at the sidewalks and that the fact that there's no ADA ramps at the corners, I would assume that's correct.
Thank you. And with regard to the LiDAR, I won't get into the weeds on those things, but I live in a part of town that's also extremely steep, and when we're looking at the top versus the bottom, is it typical to have dramatic differences? That's actually, that's a terrible question, so let me rephrase that. When you are getting the slope of a street, do you do it block by block, or do you do, how do you do sections in order to get a percentage?
So, Mayor and Commissioners, our LiDAR averages that was spoken about was taken block by block. Also, those percentages that you saw on there were individually verified by the transportation engineer to make sure that they were reflective of the LiDAR percentages.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopke, this question's for you. You mentioned deferral versus variance. From what we've heard from the applicant, the representation or the representative, it sounds like they're deferring to the creation of an SID. Is that what you were referring to when you said a deferral versus a variance?
Mayor Commissioners, yes, the deferral is a waiver of right to protest an SID. But I guess, in this case, the original plans that were submitted, we approved the deferral along the Grand because there's already a facility on the Grand. This piece, while it's only one property owner, would make that connection to that facility up on the Grand Cannon and, you know, hopefully trigger other folks in the neighborhood to start installing sidewalks. We can't say that that would happen, but, you know, that's our hope.
Are there any other public comments? Do we have any online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Sir, you have two minutes.
I'll speak really fast.
Just letting you know.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for reconsideration regarding the sidewalk variance for our home at 1208 La Grande Cannon. It is an inconvenient truth that city ordinances must comply with state and federal laws. This is to ensure that local municipalities do not promulgate unfair or unreasonable practices against their own citizens. In this case, the city of Helena's attempt to enforce the sidewalk variance is both unfair and unreasonable. Examples of seaper sidewalks, which I think we've already covered here, were both public places. We are being asked to install a sidewalk where the slope is 18% or greater, which would never be safe or ADA-compliant under current law. This is also why our contractor has not been able to find a subcontractor to install such a sidewalk. However, if he were, he estimates the cost would be between $20,000 and $30,000. I do appreciate Commissioner Shertliff's reference to the city sidewalk loan program at the earlier hearing. We looked into whether that would be a viable option. However, the loan program appears to have a $5,000 cap, which is not especially helpful for a sidewalk that's going to be as expensive as this one. At the January 27 city commission meeting, we heard the commission's concerns about homes that are being essentially knocked down and rebuilt as bigger homes. I'm not sure I agree that the size of a home should make any difference to a sidewalk variance request, but even if it should matter, in theory, I'd like to make the following comments about my particular home building project. The home we purchased in July 23 was built in 1971. There were several serious issues with the home. I'll focus on just two of them. First, the home had asbestos that had to be remediated. In addition, we had several broken pipes in February 2024, which happened when we were out of town and had a $3,000 water bill. My wife and I wanted a home where we could age in place without doing continuous repairs. Based on some difficult conversations we had with our contractor, we determined that building a new home would be safer and more cost-effective in the long run than trying to remediate the serious issues with the home we purchased. While it is true our new home is larger than the previous one, we did not intentionally knock down a perfectly good home in order to build a bigger and better one. We plan to live in the house we purchased for the foreseeable future. Unfortunately, that did not happen because the house had major issues we couldn't live with, and that forced our hand. Either way, I don't believe we should be punished for choosing to remove from circulation a house with faulty plumbing and an asbestos problem. Finally, it is noteworthy there are several homes in the immediate neighborhood that are significantly larger than our new build. One just went on the market on March 14 at 1301 La Grande, less than a block away, built in 94, has over 50% more square footage than our future home. Also, during our initial consideration, we heard from some members of the city commission about how they prefer to walk, run, and walk their dog on a sidewalk. Missing from the conversation was how persons with disabilities would be able to navigate such a steep sidewalk on Cleveland. That is a completely different standard for that of an able-bodied person. My wife Shelley's late grandmother spent the last 40 years of her life in a wheelchair after a tragic car accident. If she were alive today, we would never dream of putting her on a sidewalk anywhere near as steep as the one proposed going down Cleveland. We moved to this neighborhood to live near Shelley's aging parents. We wouldn't allow them to walk down this proposed sidewalk in the winter, even now, much less as they age further. And frankly, I'm concerned about having to shovel and maintain it for the next 30 years, and I'm also concerned about the liability I may incur if I can't shovel and maintain it. Our request to defer the installation of a sidewalk on Cleveland, same as the city has allowed on La Grande, isn't about personal opinions or preferences, it's not even about guidelines. It's about the application of the law to our request. We have demonstrated a hardship here and in the form of significant cost to us of installing this sidewalk, the significant liability we would incur if someone slips and falls on it, coupled with the fact that there's no other sidewalk within several blocks to serve any connectivity interests. As such, we request the deferral of sidewalks along both La Grande, which the city manager has already offered to us, and Cleveland pending a comprehensive sidewalk plan. Thank you again for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Just to let you know, I do have a comment prior to us taking a vote, but I would like to make a motion that I, I guess, vetted with the city attorney's office, just to make sure it was correct in terms of what's going on tonight. So, I'll offer this. So, I move to approve the sidewalk variance requested in the application dated July 22, 2024, to not install sidewalks on both La Grande Cannon Boulevard and Cleveland Street. With the additional requirement, the applicant will sign a waiver of right to protest an SID.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, or go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping to hear something new and different, and I appreciate information was provided, that provided a bit more context. I think I'm struggling with a couple of things. The arguments that are being made about the sidewalk do not appear as if they will go away with a deferral, and so I'm not sure, I'm not hearing a convincing argument about why the sidewalk will not be protested again if there is a comprehensive plan, and that does concern me a bit. I also, the safety arguments, as you may have surmised from my questions, I don't see how it is safer to not have a sidewalk. And I have concerns about variances in general and the criteria, and the criteria having been met. I live, as I indicated, in a very steep neighborhood that has a sidewalk, and I think it is appreciated by everybody, even though there are sections where it is not contiguous and things change. So, I have not, I do not feel that the criteria for a variance has been met in this case. Thanks.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Helena has an ordinance requiring the installation of sidewalks on properties that abut public rights away. The ordinance is triggered on certain permitted activity that takes place on a property, and the property owner may request a variance from this requirement from city staff. If denied, the property owner has the right to appeal to the commission. That's what's going on here tonight. The Pintos are making an appeal to the requirement to install a sidewalk that makes little to no sense. The location is on a steep grade. I'd originally written 11 to 13%, but it sounds like it's steeper than that, with no sidewalk in sight for at least five blocks. It provides no connectivity, which was stated was the purpose in the ordinance, and the chances of a pedestrian using it, given its location and characteristics, are close to zero, while adding anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 to the property owner's expenses. As has been mentioned, it also potentially increases liability for the Pintos. And I guess part of the idea here is that we're trying to solve Helena's sidewalk problem, but I don't think we can do it at 60 yards at a time, especially when it's a sidewalk that makes little sense and comes at significant cost. The harsh reality is, to significantly move the needle, it's going to take a new taxing jurisdiction to fund the $51 million necessary for adequate sidewalk infrastructure. But at this point, to force the Pintos to install a 60-yard sidewalk that no one will likely use, that may increase risk to pedestrians and increase liability for them and cost them anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000, defies common sense. Thank you.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was also hoping that I would hear some more information tonight. I think the facts have remained the same as they were at the beginning of this hearing in January. I will say, I think, you know, Helena is in a unique position. We live in Montana, we live in a mountain town. People have built up a mountain, multiple mountains around our community, and the reality is that we will always have snow and we will always have steep grades. And so, the question is, how do we make sure that people can enjoy all of the things that make this community special? One of the things that does that is improving connectivity. I will say, I think that the argument that we should approve a variance simply because one sidewalk doesn't, is a drop in the bucket of the $50 million gap, is the exact reason that we are in this situation. If we had been consistent with our ordinance and there hadn't been a 30-year gap in requiring sidewalks, we probably wouldn't be in this situation. And so, I think it has incumbent upon us to ensure that we're doing everything we can, block by block, sidewalk by sidewalk, to help improve connectivity in our community. I don't see that the topography in this property is unique. It's similar to that across the Upper West Side, especially under Mount Helena, and I don't think necessarily meets the qualifications of a variance. So, I do not plan on supporting this motion, and I hope that, you know, we will keep in mind that we still need to make improvements, even if we are not able to make a $50 million investment. We have an obligation to help improve connectivity and uphold our city ordinances.
Thank you. Any others? While I understand and hear my commissioners, fellow commissioners, I'm of the firm belief we need to uphold the rules and regulation and use common sense. When we lacking common sense in this, you know, I'm just baffled by that. So, when I heard just now the grade is 18.3% versus what we've been watching at 10, that's almost double the grade. So, I see there's no comparison there when it comes to the grade because, and it's dangerous because when I look at, put a person in wheelchair on that, in that grade, on the sidewalk, at the end of the sidewalk, what happens? Let's say there was ice there. She would, I mean, it's dangerous, and I'm going to support the variance. Thank you. At this time.
Mr. Mayor, can I just restate the motion so we're all clear on what we're about here tonight? So, my motion was, I move to approve the sidewalk variance requested in the application dated July 22, 2024, to not install sidewalks on both La Grande Cannon Boulevard and Cleveland Street. With the additional requirement, the applicant will sign a waiver, or will sign a waiver of right to protest an SID. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, it was moved and seconded already. Would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Reed.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
All right. Consider table item to consider the allocations of funds for the former consolidated Central Helena Urban Renewal Area to a new project located within the boundaries of the former URA. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Good evening, Commissioner, or Mayor Commission. I'll be really brief, but for the benefit of Commissioner Reed, I will go through some talking points that I've been consistent about in front of you all. So, tonight is a request for funding assistance from the Helena Symphony for the use or allocation of non-obligated funds from the former consolidated Central Helena URA and its associated TIF District, for assistance for funding feasibility study for what we have termed, and they have termed, Project Ming. Some background information, on 7 November of last year, the Symphony requested of the mayor and the commission partial funding request for a fundraising feasibility study, assessing the Symphony's funding capacity for Project Ming. In 2024, in partnership with DEQ, Mosaic Architecture, MBACK, The Shriners, and many others, the Helena Symphony drafted a long-term vision for the historic Ming Opera House in the light- for the historic Ming Opera House and the Light and Tractio Building in the form of a PAR, an operational feasibility study. The funding feasibility study will provide a clear picture for the Symphony of the fundraising, fundraising capacity of their organization and the envisioned acquisition in revitalization and the next steps in their Ming project. So using the unallocated funds from the former consolidated Central URA, it's just some brief background on how that structure came about. Last Chance URA and its associated plan, or its associated plan was adopted in 1969, and its associated TIF district was adopted in 1978. In 1980, the downtown development study and its associated plan, which is the Great Northern area that we recognize today, was adopted with TIF provisions. In 1990, the Last Chance area, as well as the downtown area, just for reference, everything south of Sixth Ave was downtown, or was Last Chance. North of Sixth Ave was the downtown URA. 1990, those were combined, and then in 2016, what we recognize today is the downtown URA with TIF provisions. In 1997, to back up a little bit, the Great Northern area of that project, Great Northern area project, was added to the consolidated URA plan with funding from the TIF district. Just to highlight, it was approved as a loan, and it's the only TIF project since and before that has been approved as a loan. 2025, the loan terms of that project were amended, essentially deferred repayment until 2020. To date, loan payments are being made on that original allocation, and payments are being held in a protected account, and funds haven't been reallocated as of yet. So what are the appropriate use of funds? So staffers recommend an approval for this allocation based on our observation and review of the goals and objectives from, one, the goals and objectives from the consolidated URA, as well as what is the current definition of an urban renewal project, as defined in the Urban Renewal Act located in MCA. So what is an urban renewal project? Undertakings or activities of a municipality, I need to slow down a little bit, trying to be quick, Free Mayor, in an urban renewal area for the elimination and for the prevention of the development or spread of blight. What are some of the goals and objectives that were in that now Sunset URA? To promote the area as a retail commercial, financial office, hotel and convention, cultural, historical, and entertainment focal point for the Helena urban area. Stimulate private investment, including the rehab to existing to-remained structures. Protect and restore certain historical architecturally significant buildings. And encourage the clustering of complementary activities and promote pleasant, diverse physical surroundings with an emphasis on quality and overall urban design, and to create an atmosphere that will attract tourists while at the same time address the needs of the community. We also balanced the current goals and objectives in the downtown URA that we have in place now. Build a cohesive downtown identity, add to downtown vibrancy in a mix of uses, upgrade underperforming properties, and promote historic preservation to create a quality and unique experience. So to conclude, Mayor and Commissioner, it is the staff's recommendation that the commission consider approval of a resolution allocating funds from the former consolidated Central Helena Urban Renewal Area and the associated tax increment district in the amount of $35,000 to the Helena Symphony for fundraising feasibility study. And I do want to note, too, as standard practice with all of our TIF projects, the fundor, fundee will enter into an agreement with the city relative to dispersal of those funds. I did recognize that we have Brian Obert from MBACK here as well, and Ron Baldwin from the Helena Symphony here to speak, and I think we have Maestro Scott virtually with us as well to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Brink. Comments or questions for the director?
Just a question.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Brink. I appreciate the background since I was not here at the last meeting. A question on the amount in the accounts that you mentioned coming back from the loan. What is the amount in the account, and do we have a process for accessing those funds? How do people know about them? How do we field requests for use of those funds since it's not quite a TIF?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Reed. So we have no recognized request. This is the first time we've had a request for these funds. In that restricted set of funds, I believe, and she will have to correct me, it's a little over $230,000, and it's just from this one project repaying their loan.
So just a quick follow-up, if I might. So how did the applicant know to request these funds? Do we have any public thing, or was, how did that happen?
Mayor and Commissioner, so there was, there's no public process. There was no open application process. The Symphony came to us, to city staff, asking for advice on how to fund this project. We kind of racked our brains to figure out how the city can participate in their project. Our finance director indicated that there was this loan repayment fund that's just kind of sitting out there in the now defunct or sunset TIF district, which is what the, or the Great Northern project is sitting in now, which is the portion of the sunset, sunsetted, if that is word, of the consolidated URA. And so we just recommended that, hey, this is probably a good source of funds. It meets all the requirements, meets all the goals and objectives. It's within the current boundary of both the downtown and the consolidated URA, so we felt it met the standard and intent for the use of those funds.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Director Brink. So this, if someone reads the resolution creating this URA, it looks very, very different than what our TIF and URD resolutions look like today because it requires some very specific properties or projects. Because it falls under that original URA resolution that looks a little bit different, it doesn't, a 50% match is not required, correct?
Mayor and Commissioner, that is correct.
Okay.
There is no cap as set aside in the current documents that created our current TIF districts. And just a little past history, for the consolidated URA and the other two that preceded that, TIF projects were recommended and put into the TIF district at the beginning of the increment, not as an application request as we do now.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the applicant and/or their representative?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for Director Brink.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Director Brink, who owns the building, or the property?
Mayor and Commissioner, I know I'm going to get it wrong. The Shriners still own the facility, both buildings.
Thank you. And one other question relative to funding is, in the resolution, it seems like the total project cost is $70,000. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioner, the Symphony can verify, but I think that's fairly accurate.
And so we're being asked to, if I may, a follow-up, sorry. We're being asked to provide $35,000, and it seems like there's $20,000, leaving a gap of about 15. Is that, am I seeing the math there correctly?
That would pencil out. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director.
Okay. At this time, we entertain. Is the applicant available for comments? Okay, we have, you have someone online?
Maestro Scott.
Okay, Maestro Scott, and then you, well, let's deal with in-house first, and then we go to the maestro.
My pardon, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay. I am live now. Okay. For funding the feasibility study that Director Brink mentioned, my thanks also to Brian Obert and MBACK for the continued support and solicitation of three proposals, which will go to Commissioner Logan's question, that we have received to do a study. One of the things I wanted to mention as well is that we would certainly keep you posted about the results of that study as it happens. Just to give you a little bit of a timeline for what would be expected and what has happened so far, thanks to Brian and MBACK, they have solicited three proposals. Those proposals, which came in May and June of last year, range from $45,000 to $75,000 with varying levels of scope. And it would be my intention to negotiate that scope should we move forward. How and when would this process begin? As soon as funding was approved, and I expect it would take about six to eight weeks to initiate the project. There would be a firm selection project with interviews and presentations. That would take about two to four weeks. There would be a final scope cost timeline discussed and negotiated. That would generate a statement of work. That would take about two weeks, and then negotiate and sign a contract, and that would take about two weeks. So about two months for that initiation process. The fundraising study itself would take anywhere from three to six months, depending on the proposal. Two of the proposals were three months in duration, and the proposal that was the $75,000 proposal was actually six months in duration. Again, my expectation would be to sit down and negotiate this with the proposing entities. The typical scope of the fundraising studies to evaluate local, regional, and national donor predisposition to contribute to a major capital campaign of this type, to refine the campaign fundraising goal, and recommend strategies for structure and timing, assess the readiness to lead a major campaign in conjunction with its partner, with the Symphony's partner organizations, and recommendations for staffing and infrastructure, and develop a compelling case for the campaign with suggested donor-centric messages. Those are just some of the many objectives that would come out of the study. And again, I would commit to bringing you, Mr. Mayor, and the commission, the full results of the study if it were to be funded.
Thank you. Okay, that was the presentation from the applicant. Other public comments, and please remind them that we have two minutes limit.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Brian Obert, the Executive Director of Montana Business Assistance Connection, the economic development agency that works with you, O-B-E-R-T. One of the things that we were very interested in for the Ming Theater or any project downtown is the state legislature has funded a brand-new museum sitting over here at the Capitol. We're trying to work closely with the T-Bid, the BID, the city, the Chamber for Helena, to find reasons for people to come to Helena to, in essence, spend money, spend time. This is one additional feature that can do that in the downtown area. We have spent quite a bit of time, just because we know if nothing else, this is an underutilized building in the downtown area. Whether it's this proposal or any other proposal, our intent is to try to drive activity into the downtown area that makes us more compatible. In this case, this is strictly looking at, do we have the capability to come up with the funding needed for this structure, and utilizing other financial mechanisms, one of those being historic preservation tax credits, because this structure, or at least half of the structure, is within that. At the time we started this, New Markets Tax Credits were going to be another avenue that we would actually apply for, in a bad way, but in a good way. New Markets Tax Credits in this district are no longer available because the median income for downtown Helena has risen through the years, and we no longer meet that standard for qualifying for New Markets Tax Credits. So that put a bit of additional concern or pressure on the Symphony to be able to come up with the funds. This is just a study to verify that we can fund this, to actually create a facility that will create energy and draw money into downtown Helena. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others, Madam Clerk? You want to put the maestro on?
Maestro Scott, can you access your mic at this point?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Two minutes.
Okay. Great, thank you. I just want to, I already said this before, Mayor and Commissioners, I just want to say it for Commissioner Reed's sake, because she wasn't here. The Symphony has already done two other major studies that the state funded at $100,000. One was an operational pro forma, meaning what would it cost for us to run this, because it would not just be a chamber hall and education facility, it would also be artist housing, housing for potentially Grand Street Theater artists and Archie Bray and other potential housing, but it would also be one of the only major event facilities in town with a commercial kitchen. And we did an operational pro forma, and we did a full preliminary architectural report. That has taken several years. Now we're at the final study part of it, which is what, how will we raise the money to do it? But we already know what it will cost to run it, and so forth. And finally, I just want to say, artistically, we would not leave the Civic Center. The Civic Center would still, we would still be the principal resident, overwhelmingly so. None of that changes. It would just, instead of using smaller venues for our education concerts, we would use the Ming Opera House. And we've been working with the Shriners' leadership through this entire process, who have been very excited about it. So I just wanted to clarify those other studies and our commitment to the Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to approve a resolution for the allocation of funds in the amount of $35,000 from the former consolidated Helena Urban Renewal Area and Associated Tax Increment District to the Helena Symphony for funding a feasibility study.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, actually, you know what, Commissioner Logan, I'm going to let you go first.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. This is kind of a tough one for me. I don't believe I'm going to be supporting this request this evening, and I mean, it seems to fit the bill for either the old district or the new, but I don't know that there's a real deliverable here. Typically, with requests such as these, a very specific tangible is requested, and I went to our URD TIF, which I'm probably not going to find here tonight. There it is. And just a couple, a number of examples, 2020 installation of a concrete stage pad in the park to assist in the continued event programming in a safe outdoor setting, boulevard tree replacements in the 400 block, the Placer Building facade improvements, Sealy Building, they asked for a match to develop and install sidewalks and pedestrian amenities along the gulf. So there were some real specific tangible requests. But this is $35,000 for a fundraising feasibility study, and that's a lot. That's a big ask for a maybe. And it doesn't seem like the funding is all there at this point. So I guess, I'm just, I've got some concerns about the proposal, and so that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great project. I'm concerned about the use of this funding for this piece of it. I would feel much more comfortable if we were talking about funding, you know, an actual part of the actual project versus a feasibility study, which, to borrow Commissioner Logan's phrase, is a maybe. phrase, is a maybe. I'm worried that if the feasibility study indicates that it's not possible to raise the funds, then our funds are gone, and we don't have much for the downtown to benefit from. I also am a little bit concerned about the process for these funds. I don't, it doesn't sound like there was a public process. It doesn't sound like there was an opportunity for other projects to submit applications. It doesn't sound like there was even an actual application. So I'm a little bit hesitant to commit funding, sort of in this manner, for something that's not a demonstrable benefit to the entire downtown. I would like to see more public input or some sort of a process. And I do think there, you know, there might be other people interested in competing for those funds. So again, I think this project, it looks really interesting. I'm super supportive of the project. Again, I think this funding for this piece makes me uncomfortable, so I don't think I would be supporting this.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I've had the opportunity to tour these buildings several times, from the Opera Hall to the organ that's up, that looks like it's from an old church, to the stage, and the 100-year-old canvas curtains. It's a significant piece of Helena's history, and it's, the history and the potential are undeniable for me. Every time I've seen this space, fortunately, I worry about it falling into, say, disrepair. And I think this proposal, what they're proposing, if they get the funding, I think it's exciting, and it would energize downtown. Prior to being on the Commission, Commissioner Logan brought this up, was a couple of the projects we proposed on the Urban Renewal District when I was a part of that board. And this, what they're proposing with the Ming seems to be one of the most comprehensive I've seen. I'm excited for it, but I can understand the concerns. I know the funds were kind of under different guidelines than our typical TIF board guidelines. And however, I think it's, I think I'll be supporting this for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I believe it has been moved and seconded.
Oh, it has been, oh, geez. All right, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
Thank you. Consider a proven Victims of Crime Act, VOKA, grant policies. Assistant City Attorney Pettish, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I came to you last week outlining some of the findings from the grant audit that we received in the City Attorney's Office. That audit was administered by the Montana Board of Crime Control. They were auditing us because we receive in the City Attorney's Office and the Victim Services Office a grant through the Victims of Crime Act. And that grant, we first became the recipient of it in 2016. In this last January, when we had that audit, that was our first audit under the grant. And they had a few findings. Essentially, they were that we did not have four policies memorialized in writing. The four policies are a volunteer policy, a determination of suitability to work with minors policy, limited English proficiency policy, and a reporting a breach and confidentiality policy. All four of these policies were presented to you in your packet. They, more, like I said, they memorialize what we have essentially been doing over the past, I guess, what is it, nine years since we started receiving the grant. The, I guess, the big changes would be that we are, for the breach, if a breach was to occur of personal, personable, personal identifying information, we would follow the city's current policy that's in our city and county ITNS policy, and then we would simply report that breach to MBCC as well. In addition, the determination of suitability to work with minors policy, that's something that we essentially do now. We, everyone in our office receives a background check upon hiring. We also receive training in confidential criminal justice information, and so what this policy would do is just ensure that we are doing that every five years. In addition, we have a limited English proficiency policy, which is just memorializing the Language Link Program that we offer to people already, which enables people who don't speak English to communicate with us and continue to receive services. And finally, the volunteer policy, it would just memorialize the fact that people can work within the Victim Services Office by providing volunteer services, and that policy gives an outline of how that would work. These policies would only apply to the City Attorney's Office and the people who are working within, or, excuse me, within the City Attorney's Office and the Victim Services Office, and apply to the people who are working within the grant guidelines. They would not apply to people in the city more broadly. So today, I'm asking that you would please approve these VOKA grant policies, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any comments or questions? Do we have any public comments on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the following policies for the purpose of complying with VOKA grant requirements, the volunteer policy for the City Attorney's Office, the determination of suitability to interact with minors policy, the limited English proficiency policy, and the reporting of a breach of personal identifiable information policy.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution establishing new fees charged for the use of the Helena Civic Center and repealing Resolution Number 20819. Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here on behalf of Director Smith and the Civic Center manager to present the final resolution for adoption of Civic Center fees. These were presented to the Commission at an administrative meeting, and also the resolution of intention was presented at an earlier meeting. This is for final adoption. These fees were last increased in May of 2023. The park staff and the Civic Center manager carefully looked at each fee, reviewed them, and then also compared them to other venues to ensure that we're still offering a very fair competitive price to rent the venue out for various events. The fees are slated to increase revenue by about $42,500, and there was no exact inflationary adjustment to any of the fees, but each fee was looked at separately to adjust where they felt it was fair and comparable to propose the fee increases. And if you have any further questions regarding individual fees, I know that Byron Dyke, the Civic Center manager, is online to answer any of those questions for you.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution establishing new fees charged for the use of the Helena Civic Center and repealing Resolution Number 20819.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any final discussion from the Commission? This meeting is adjourned.